I'll call the meeting to order for Monday, May 14th. The clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Moller.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. Do you have before you the minutes from the regular meeting of April 23rd and the special meeting of May the 7th? Do we have a motion to receive and file?
No.
Thank you, Councilmember or Mayor Pro-Tim Archibald. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole. Is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor of the minutes as they are submitted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes will stand as submitted. We'll move on to the public hearings. If the clerk could please read the first one.
Number one is to hear comments on the proposed amendment of the Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan for the Peerless Site Development Area. Following the public hearing, council will give consideration to a resolution to approve the amendment of the Tax Increment Financing and Development Plan for the Peerless Site Development Area.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the City Council on public hearing number one? Seeing no one, oh, sorry.
Kathleen McCready, 4014 14th Street, Port Huron. I read the documents available to me to pose the questions and try to understand the bigger picture of what the local governments are proposing to do with tax dollars. How will it affect me? Will I use the facility? Will I like the way it looks? Will I get a bang for my buck? Maybe. The answer to that, however, is many years away. Am I against the project? No. Am I for the project? I am unsure. Thirty years ago, the need to revitalize the Peerless area was great. From the original project summary, which I have a copy of, more than half the money was spent on infrastructure projects, roads, seawall, et cetera, and another portion spent to acquire the land. A fair division of land use for the public, use for private homes and commercial retail. I'm not sure how they classify a hotel, so I'm just calling it commercial retail. An equitable distribution of taxpayer dollars. Can the same be said about the new Tifa plan? Thank you.
Thank you. I think so.
Okay. My name is Adam Clum, Port Huron. Going through some paperwork, I found some original TIFAs. Port Huron, industrial park, Jack Talon. Thank you. I appreciate it. And the Peerless site that is up for discussion tonight. All these TIFAs are thirty-year TIFAs. Long time, three decades. All these TIFAs generated millions of dollars. As John Ogden would say, the money was captured to stay within those areas. And from my perspective, I think it's time for TIFAs to come full circle. And the following are my thoughts on the subject. All levels of government have a common thread. They are not good stewards of taxpayer money. The reason Port Huron is always floundering for money is that there is too much investment in TIFAs. TIFAs need to be finalized, the tax base captured from them, put in the general fund and city debts. Port Huron has a sizable bond issue concerning the sewer separation. There is also a sizable bond issue in the convention center project. The Peerless project needs to run its course and not be renewed. Port Huron, with an ever-exiting population, has enough debt. These bond issues are comparable to maxing out your credit cards, knowing you do not have the resources to pay the debt. After thirty years, it is time for the Peerless project to transfer taxes captured to the general fund. TIFAs are special projects, AKA special interests. It is time for the entire city, pardon me, to reap the benefits from these projects. Port Huron is the city that needs to work as a unit. That's what areas which have greater benefit from the tax dollar. Port Huron is a city in crisis. More police officers and more city inspectors to fix the mess made and that is continuing to be fostered. I live in one of the worst sections of Port Huron, and an entire special interest being privileged financially. To continue this kind of investment is like putting salt in an already festering wound. And I guess what my bottom line is, I am all about fairness, and there's a lot of money involved in here, and if some of it was in the city budget, then we would not have to figure creative ways every year to get more money from the taxpayer. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the City Council on public hearing number one? Public hearing number one closed and asked for a motion for approving the amendment.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewandowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro-Tim Archibald. Is there a discussion?
Yes, Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Yeah, some of the things that were just spoken about, and I looked up another but similar issues that I raised. You know, during the study, the CSL, which did elaborate study for McMorn, and also we used the same company for this Tifa, you know, why the, basically, the economic impact at first showed two hundred new employees for the city of Port Huron or for the convention center. CSL says the number of new employees would be a hundred, which is a hundred less than anticipated. I think item E of the Peerless document that, from 1985, it says improvements cited on page three require a detailed description. I didn't see anything in the changes on this new, on the Tifa that extends it by thirty years that basically detailed the description of the convention center or any other uses. How much, my other question is, how much administrative and operating costs are associated with the Tifa? If you look at the 1985 document, it says that we have to let people know what the impact is. I'd like to know who's going to be paying for the administration of this. Is the city going to pay for it? Is the county going to pay for it? Or is Hilton going to pay for it? One other issue that I had here is, and I guess it was answered by looking at the document and stuff, I was kind of wondering where the, where the present Tifa ends. Well, it ends in 2015, and the new Tifa will start then. So basically, this is going to, what, about a thirty-three-year Tifa? And I guess that was one of the issues. The other thing is, you know, she brought up an interesting concept about dissolving TIFAs, you know, and they could be used in all kinds of different things. I would suggest if we want a real Tifa, that we would take the ghetto gas station at 11th and LaPierre and turn that into a Tifa district, and then let's spend all that money on police for that gas station. I mean, it's, it's an area of crime, and it's something that a Tifa could certainly handle. And as I said, I just can't move in that direction until we, basically, till we fill our budget. We have a budget crisis. We're going to talk about it on Wednesday evening. We've got some emails warning us about some of the complications, and I think we'd be too early to move in any direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember.
Just two questions for Mr. Shu, shall we? If I may. The one, I just, when this passes tonight on a five to two vote, is there a time expiration that this will expire? Can another council reverse it at a later date during the thirty-year time, thirty-three year time?
That I'm not sure of. I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you.
Okay. And second of all, you and I had a discussion, and I'll let you answer it. I already know the answer, and I'm satisfied, but you acted like you wanted to share it with the public, and I think it's probably good to share it with the public. So I'll ask the question, are you representing us, the county, or the investor here tonight?
We are not representing the investor. And under the ethical rules, it's a little different than a standard representation. We represent both the county and the city, and under our ethical rules, if two of our clients come together with an agreement and ask us to reduce that agreement to writing, the ethical rules permit that. If there was a dispute between the parties, or if either party objected to that arrangement, then we would not be able to represent either side. So the ethical rules, we are not representing the developer. We represent the city and the county, and as far as this agreement goes, we are basically acting as an intermediary in reducing it to writing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
Questions, too? I'm not sure if it's going to be more for John or for somebody else.
Go ahead and ask the question, and then the-
Is it my understanding that state law doesn't allow for new TIFAs to be created? I mean, you can renew them, but you can't create a new one in a new district?
Mayor Rep. and members of council, maybe the easy answer is it depends. The Tifa Act, the Tax Increment Financing Authority Act, which the Peerless site is under, it is my understanding that none of those can be created. So if you're talking about the specific act, I think your statement is correct. If you're talking about can you still do tax increment financing districts, yes, you can, but under different acts. There's a local development financing authority, which is what our industrial park expansion area is. I believe those are still allowed, only for industrial areas. And within certain parameters, brownfields can be used to capture taxes, and that would also then be a tax increment, so.
I have one more. I kind of understand why you want to expand or redo the Tifa. Can you explain to the general folks why you might want to have a Tifa district in an area?
Certainly. Generally, what you're looking at is some significant investment that needs to be made. And as somebody talked about earlier, in terms of the Peerless site, you're really talking about a lot of infrastructure that's actually public park, public parkway. And then the theory is that that's then paid for by the new development. So because you've put the money into the infrastructure, you get the development, you then use the increase in taxes, which would be the increment, and you use that increase to then pay for the development. When you do that, the city is not just capturing city taxes, and again, it depends on which kind of authority we're talking about, but when this one was originally conceived, we were capturing all taxes. Currently, we're capturing about half the taxes levied, but we're capturing more than the city taxes. So actually, when you have an increment, you're capturing more than you would get otherwise if you were to close out the plan and only then have your own taxes flow through. So in a sense, we get a bigger bang from our buck by capturing taxes. And then the other argument is, if you needed to do the infrastructure work in order to get the development, then you're really not reducing other people's taxes, other entities' taxes, because this is development that otherwise might not have been there. So you're capturing the increase.
Thank you.
Is that essentially what you were?
Yeah. You can say it better than I do.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Ogden, while he's standing up there? Wondered if you had anything else you wanted to add to make it more understandable.
No, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't think so. We're, you know, we capture taxes now on the site based on the increased development from the Edison Inn, though the size of the increment has been declining. As we've talked about some in the last couple of weeks, real estate values have gone down in this, in this community and in every community, and that's been true of the Edison Inn also. So it's been, the capture has been declining. The hope would be with the increased investment, both on the public side and on the private side, that you would then get increased tax capture from the private development piece.
So theoretically, and excuse my voice, it's leaving me on and off, if this project weren't to happen and the Edison Inn just went dark and closed, we wouldn't be capturing a whole lot anyways.
That's quite possible, yes. It has been declining, and that's with the inn open. Certainly, were the inn to close, there might be value on the site for some period of time, but we may also have difficulty collecting. That's another phenomenon we've seen lately with, that real estate is not always collectible.
Right. Is there any other discussion? Thank you. There's no other discussion, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to public hearing number two.
Is to hear comments on the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, known as CAAPER, for the Community Development Division.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number two? Seeing no one, we'll declare public hearing number two closed. Public hearing number three.
Is to hear comments on the tentative budget for the Port Huron Downtown Development Authority for the 2012-2013 fiscal year.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number three? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number three closed. Public hearing number four.
Is to hear comments on the proposed capital improvement program.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number four? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number four closed. Public hearing number five.
Is to hear comments on the proposed 2012-2013 budget.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make any comments? Before we do, as I see John, and I almost forgot, John's going to give us a brief presentation for the benefit of the viewing audience and those members of the audience that are here tonight before we open it up.
Mayor and members of council, this presentation will be somewhat familiar to a presentation that you saw Monday night, though this is an abbreviated version. Maybe not short, but abbreviated. As we've talked about, the city of Port Huron and virtually every other community in the state and in the country is seeing declining real estate values. As a result, we're also seeing then declining revenues. Residential property taxable values are down almost ten percent for the upcoming year. That reduces the taxes paid by our residents in July and December, which is a positive for the residents, though a negative in terms of the value of their homes. Overall, if you go back to 2008, 2009, we've had about a forty thousand, excuse me, a forty percent decline in overall values. It's about a twenty-five percent decline in taxable values. That means that an average home worth $100,000 in 2008 would be worth about $60,000 today. We also have upcoming issues with personal property tax. In the current year, we, or in the budget year that we're looking at, we actually have an increase in personal property tax over the prior year. But the state of Michigan is considering eliminating that tax. Legislation has been introduced. It has passed out of the Senate to the House, so the House is not expected to finalize things until sometime after the first, Tuesday after the first Monday in November. Initially, the plan is that it will only, it will affect small filers. Any personal property with a value under forty, taxable value under $40,000 will not have to file. We think that impact will be about $80,000 to the city. That's a year away. Eventually, it's going to eliminate industrial personal property, but it's going to eliminate it a year at a time, so we're going to lose the first year. Again, it's a year away, but the, for the 13-14 year, we'll lose both the small filers and whatever the new acquisitions for industrial property were. And then it's a fairly long transition period as they phase in the rest. It's going to have a negative impact on local governments, on schools, much more so than the state. And currently, roughly about eighteen and a half percent of the city taxable value is from personal property taxes. About fifty percent of that is industrial property. The balance would be commercial and utility. This is all on business property. So we're going to need to watch that to see what the impact will be, but that's primarily the 13-14 year. As you know, in the budget, there's a fire collaboration proposal. It's expected to save the city of Port Huron about $350,000 in the first year. We'll save additional amounts in future years, and that we see as a positive, as we expect revenues to continue to decline moving forward. Without the collaboration, there is a potential gap that will need to be dealt with. We also have some issues in the Garbage and Solid Waste Fund. The city levies a property tax which pays for weekly trash pickup and recycling. In the past, it has also paid for street sweeping, for brush pickup, and for pickup in public areas like the parks and the parkway. The property taxes are no longer sufficient to provide all those services. In the proposed budget, we're proposing that the weekly trash pickup and recycling continue at its current levels, that public area pickup also continue. The street sweeping activities have been moved into the streets funds where they used to be, and they've been reduced somewhat in frequency. And the brush program has been moved back into parks and forestry and also been reduced. Expectation is that after this upcoming year, there are going to be more difficulties in terms of declining revenues. We're going to need to take a look at that contract and those services so that the services match the available revenues. As you know, and we've had discussions, there've been a series of changes in both the makeup of the number of city employees and also compensation and benefits. Just as a summary, any new hires after July 1st of '08 in the non-public safety areas are now in a new hybrid pension plan. All new hires after 7/108, including public safety, are no longer provided with retiree health care at retirement. There is a health care savings plan that both the employee and the employer contributes to. Employee pension contributions have been increased by three percentage points last year, one percentage point effective July 1, another effective July 1 of '13. So for instance, for non-union employees, they will have gone from, would have been three percent two years ago to six, to seven at July 1, and then an eight percent employee contribution at July of '13. We've moved to self-insurance for health care, which has reduced our cost, increased copays and deductibles for current employees and retirees, also reducing costs. And pension costs have been reduced by changing the way vacations can be accumulated. Further in the proposed budget, there's a proposal to eliminate four positions, but to add two police officers, so a net change of two. That would bring the total of eliminated positions to ninety since 2002. Nineteen of those are administrators and supervisors, seventy-one are in other positions. The workforce has declined from 328 to 238, a decrease of over twenty-five percent. This is just a summary of the various areas where there have been declines. And we will post this on the, on the website, so it will be available for viewing. I know I'm going through it kind of quickly, so. We'd also put a chart together showing the decline in number of employees over that ten year period. To get into a little more detail on the budget, this chart's going to look a little busy, but it's the major revenue components for the general fund. The green are the property tax revenues. You can see, starting in the 2000-2001 year, was a fairly steady climb till you got to '08-'09, then we've seen that rather severe decline. Since that date, we're now at a point where revenues are lower than they were in 2002-2003. Income taxes, the red bar, you can see it was just over $6 million. It was actually the highest of the general fund revenue sources in 2001. It declined a little, then has stayed rather flat moving forward, other than the one extraordinary year in '07-'08, and it is now smaller than property tax revenues. The blue bar is revenue sharing. You see, revenue sharing was above $5 million in 2001. It's expected to decline to a little over $3 million in, for the 2012-2013 budget. So the largest decline that we've seen in revenue has been in revenue sharing, but we've also seen that large drop-off in property taxes. This is, was just an example put together for property taxes for an average homeowner. We used $100,000 value in 2008, showed what the climb would have been using the average change in residential overall for the city, and then showing the decline since 2008. So at a high point, the taxes would have been $1,558 a year. For this next year, they're expected to be $1,160. It's roughly a $400 decline over that period. Just comparing to relative inflation over that same period, as you can see, in the beginning of the decade, revenues and expenditures grew at about the same rate as inflation, which is the black line across the top. However, once we got to '07-'08, revenues declined, expenditures stayed relatively flat. In those years when revenues were higher than expenditures, that was the money that was then set aside, transferred to the wastewater fund, and used to offset rate increases. And as you can see, as we've gotten to the more recent years, there is no real gap between revenues and expenditures. To talk briefly about the water and wastewater funds, this is a chart of the combined utility funds, so water and wastewater together. The green bar is budgeted revenues for the upcoming year and the past four years. The red bar are budgeted or actual expenditures. If we had a healthy utility system, those two bars would be the same height. But as you can see, there's a gap between revenues and expenditures, and that gap needs to be made up. The city has been using captured taxes that we talked about earlier tonight. In general, the, the large TIF captures go to the land purchase fund and are then transferred to the wastewater fund and used to offset rate increases. If we did not have those TIFs, that would create quite a serious problem in terms of trying to make up that gap. One of the other things that's talked about periodically is that we sell water to three surrounding townships, Fort Grashik, Port Huron, and Kimball. Kimball in turn sells water to Clyde Township, so there's four townships that use city water. For the last, boy, it's been four or five years, it's roughly fifty-fifty in terms of the water produced, how much is sold to city residents and how much is sold to non, or city users, and how much is sold to non-city users. For the most recent year, it was 50.1 in-city, 49.9 out-city. And that's the first bar. You can see that the blue and the green is about equal. The second set, where the blue bar is higher, that's the revenue that was generated from in-city users. The green bar is the revenue from out-city users. So on the water side, 57.2 percent of the revenue came from in-city, 42.8 percent came from out-city. Sewer is even a greater difference. Almost eighty-one percent of the sewer revenue comes from in-city users, just on, or just over nineteen percent of the revenue comes from non-city users. And on a combined basis, you can still see city users are paying much more for the systems and the operations, 71.6 percent compared to 28.4 percent for non-residents. So the allegation that's been made that somehow the townships are subsidizing city users, as you can see from these numbers, is not accurate. In moving forward and looking at the two utility funds, we did projections, one that assumed no rate increases after the current year, the other that assumed that there would be rate increases sufficient so that revenues and expenditures would match, but no more than that. And one of the reasons we're doing that projection is this next slide, which shows the debt graph from when the city first borrowed in 2000-2001. Those are our escalating annual debt service payments. They reach a peak starting roughly in 2015-2016 at something over twelve and a half million. They'll be in that range for five or six years, and then once you get to 2021, they start to decline. So for the upcoming year, we're budgeted at about $11 million in, in debt payments, but that will go up another roughly million and a half before the projects are done. When we took a look at the available savings that the city has in the various funds, including the utility funds, land purchase fund, the proceeds from having sold Grandview Towers, and if you assume all of those monies were dedicated to use to support water and sewer activity, that's the yellow bar. So what we're looking at here, there are two bars for each year. The left-hand side are the operating and maintenance expenditures for the plant, a small piece for capital expenditures, and then a fairly large piece for debt service. The right-hand bar, the blue, are the current revenues. The green are the operating transfers that are coming from, primarily from the land purchase fund. And then the yellow would be if we use savings transfers to fill in that gap. As you can see, we can fill the gap through the June 30-15 year, which is one year later than we could have filled it from, based on the projection a year ago. So we are making some progress. But come 2016, there is still a fairly large gap. The savings will have run out at that point. Just to try and put a number then on that gap- Just to try and put a number then on that gap, you can see the blue bars are in the years when there is no more savings, and that was to put, so that, once those savings are depleted, there's a revenue gap. Gaps estimated to be about $6 million in '15, '16, grow to $17 million in '18, '19. There is progress being made. This is lower than our prior estimates. Savings do appear to last one year longer. The revenue difference is now about 40 to 50% would be the increase required to fill the gap if there were no gradual increases. That's a smaller number, it was 60 to 70. However, that gap is as large as the largest general fund activities. This would be the comparison slide, with the left-hand side being, the blue is the police department, the green, the fire department, the yellow, general governmental operations, red is parks and rec, and the pinkish is everything else. Compare that to the blue side, that's the gap amount for each year. So you can see the difficulty we would have in trying to subsidize from the operations of the city. Then the second projection was to look at a gradual rate increase each year, trying to stretch the savings so that they would fill in until we reach the peak of the debt. If we do that, we can eliminate the revenue gap that starts in '15, '16. It allows savings to last until revenues match expenses. It avoids the large 40 to 50% rate increase that would just be three, three years out, I guess, if we're talking about the 12, '13 budget now. It limits the adjustment to approximately $3 to probably eventually $4 per month, and then, once we get past '19, '20, it's possible rate increases could be reduced or eliminated depending on what else is going on at the city at that point. When we do that, this is the revised slide showing the grayish bar that's in the middle is the amount of rate increase needed each year that will then allow the savings to stretch out and last until we've hit the debt peak. So this is similar to the projections that you've seen the past at least two years. As I said before, they are improving somewhat. The rate increases are smaller now as we get out into '18 and '19, particularly for water. We also, you know, as we're looking at utility rates, wanted to compare to other utilities. We've looked at natural gas, electricity, cable TV. We've got nine years of data now on this. This is a chart showing, the red at the top on the left-hand side, though it drops to be the second number, on the right-hand side is natural gas and average monthly billing. The green is electricity, which you can see had a fairly steady climb and then has declined somewhat in the past year. The purple color is cable TV. You see really a fairly straight line upslope, and then the blue would be the average monthly billing for water, slightly less than cable TV, and has kept about the same distance throughout that slide. We also wanted to look at other communities, both around the state and in St. Clair County. We use 2,000 cubic feet per quarter as our base to do the calculation, which is slightly larger than the city's current average, which we used in the budget. But if you take a look at that, this is cities around the state, primarily similar to Port Huron, central cities with their own water and wastewater plants. Port Huron is the highlighted rate. Those are our proposed rates, the rest are the current rates in effect. As you can see, we're right about in the middle of the chart with Bay City, the Sioux, Saginaw, Lansing, Mount Clemens, and Grand Rapids above us. If you look in St. Clair County, we're in the middle, a little towards the top of the middle. Cotterville Township, St. Clair Township, Marine City, and Clay Township are above us. St. Clair, Algenack, Marysville are immediately below us. We do, we do want to take a look each year to make sure that we are comparable. So that is the abbreviated, I guess somewhat abbreviated, review of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Ogden. Now open it up to anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council relative to public hearing number five, which is on the proposed budget. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Seeing no one, declare public hearing number five closed. We'll move on at this time now to the public comment portion of the agenda. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on any other item, either on the agenda or not, please come forward and state your name, and you have four minutes.
Donna Kloonport-Huron, I have a question concerning communications and petitions. And I'll just read it. A resolution from the St. Clair Community College Board exempting their taxes from capture for the brownfield plan for the 2021, 2025 Water Street redevelopment project. What my inquiry is, I'm a member of the Brownfield Authority, and I'm just wondering why I was not apprised of this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the city council under public comment?
Kathleen McCready, 41414th. I'm president of the Harrison Area Neighborhood Watch, and we're having a cleanup this Saturday, May 19th, and I wanted to make sure you all had some flyers and make sure everybody knew about this, if you have time in the lawn mower, there's a lot of lawn grasses, and we'd like to see things cleaned up. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council under public comment?
Good evening, council and administrators. Sharon Bender, South Boulevard, Port Huron. I have a question regarding the Tifa request. Have you heard from the members of that Tifa district? And what were their comments?
We can address, is this the item that's already been approved that you're talking about?
Yes. Well, you didn't ask for questions.
No, no, I'm just asking if that's the item you're talking about.
And that's what, that's why I'm just questioning, I just wanted to know what other comments you have received as far as the...
From the people in the actual district?
Yes.
I don't know that I can ask the question, though. If you want to finish with your comments, I'll ask it at that time.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
And then I would also like, regarding, regarding the budget, since all of the budget workshops have not been completed, I would like more emphasis placed on protection for safety with the police, the basic needs of a community. The comment from Captain Brigney, from the former Huron lady owner, when he commented about small business in the Times-Harold Lop Ed some months ago, and he said that small businesses are what generate a city, I couldn't agree with that more, and I think that we need to really look at how we retain our businesses. Many businesses have left. I would like to know why AAA moved, just, just one right off the top of my head, but we need to keep the businesses that we have in our city so that we can generate the necessary revenue, and we are losing our businesses. There's a reason why we are. We need to find out what it is and correct it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if, I guess I'll ask this now. Mr. Ogden, do you know whether or not anyone commented that lives in the area of the Tifa?
Mayor, members of council, I don't believe we've had any comments from, anyone from within the Tifa district.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council under public
Ms. Carl Feese, I live at 921 Wall Street. I just have one remark. Mayor Rep., you were quoted in the Times Herald recently as saying that with the disregard or the dismissal of the 1% administration fee that you guys were looking to implement, that Mr. Brown, Mr. Ogden, would have to look at other ways to make up that money. What I'd like to say is, why before this was even thought up to be passed on as a 1% administration fee, was the budget not looked at closer to find out where that money can be made up from? And if you guys need to look harder to find out where to make your cuts in the budget to make up that money, that that 1% was made, why can't you look farther and find better cuts and deeper cuts in some of the services that some of us would gladly take to get more police on the streets? But why can't you look at the budget deeper and make those cuts before you raise our water rates? 6.5% per year is pretty tough. That's about all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council under public comment? Declare public comment portion of our agenda closed, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
I have a legal question on communications, petitions, number one. All we're doing is receiving, but I work there, so I don't know if I have a conflict or not for just receiving and filing, or, we're not taking any action, so.
No, no conflict.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep. Yes. So the items on the consent agenda was, under communications, was a resolution from SC4 exempting their taxes from capture for the brownfield plan for 2021 through '25, an email from Jeffrey Young requesting permission to remove the sidewalk on the west side of his rental property at 1532 Lyon, which has been received and filed and referred to administration for recommendation. The quarterly financial report for nine months ending March 31st, 2012, was received and filed. Approval of Enigma and Rum and Whiskey Runners Bar Works Incorporated Class C SDM license, removing the city's objection and notifying the Michigan Liquor Control Commission was adopted. Confirm and declare single lot special assessments in the total amount of $157.34 for special trash pickup, and confirm and declare single lot special assessments in the total amount of $210 for the cost of removing noxious weeds or unlawful roofs or blighting factors. And now we are on city manager recommendation number one.
It's a recommendation that the bid of M&amp;M pavement marking in the amount of $9,142.04 for longline pavement striping be accepted.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewandowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole, is there discussion? Take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Recommendation number two.
It's a recommendation that the bid of VJM Design and Build in the amount of $49,495 for an office roof replacement at 265624th Street, which is where ALD Thermal Treatment is located, be accepted.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Boy, we've got two. Councilmember Cole.
I'm just curious if we could get a little more information about the difference. I was a little alarmed at the difference in the bids.
That was my question.
Mayor Rep. and councilmembers, this is why we competitively bid prices, is to assure that we get the best price for the community. We have checked on the company in question and found that they do and can do acceptable work. That's not an issue in this particular case, and so that's why we're recommending that we proceed with the low bidder, but it does save the city quite a bit of money.
Is that true?
That was my question.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion? Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I'll ask Bob a question, too. How old is that building?
I don't have a precise date on it, however, this building, we lease to ALD, and the lease payments are significantly more than the repair. This particular roof, though, I can assure you is outside of any warranty period that we would have had on.
Okay, I just wasn't sure when that, I know it was probably back in the 80s at some point in time.
I can't remember the exact date. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know.
Mayor and council, and this is going to be somewhat a guess, but that's the Petri Takata II building. The city didn't build it, I don't believe. I believe we had a hand in building the first Petri Takata building, not the second. I'm guessing either late 80s or early 90s is when it was built, so it might be 20 years old. It's more than 15, so somewhere in that range.
If we didn't build it, how did we come in possession of it?
We purchased it for, there was, the, the, the property became available, and the recommendation at that time was that the city consider purchasing it as part of our, our speculative buildings that we've had in the, in the, on the sites. So that was approved by council. We did purchase it for a very advantageous price, as I recall, well, I don't recall its purchase, or its building, because that was before my arrival with the city. I do recall it's, I do recall our purchasing it, and we did inspect it at the time, and the cost was pennies on the dollar for what it was costing us to build buildings of that type at that time. City council approved the purchase, and we were very fortunate at a later date to be able to lease it, and the lease revenues have more than made up for the cost of that original purchase.
I would also like to add that they recently did a major addition to this building at their expense, and we're getting a lease fee for that, so.
Okay. That's true.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
For Bob, what's wrong with the roof? Is it leaking, or is the lamp, or are the tenants complaining, or what, what's, or is it?
Sure. What occurred was, as, as the city manager has just informed city council, the current leasing, through approval by the city, made improvements to the building, and they, those improvements were to the office area. During their work, they discovered some problems with the roof during those improvements and contacted us. We inspected those problems and made temporary repairs for nominal cost until we could have an opportunity to properly bid the replacement of the roof, which is necessary.
So it's leaking?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Clay? I think you can sit down. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We have recommendation number four.
Recommendation that the bid of aren't asphalt ceiling incorporated in the amount of $21,700 for the resurfacing of the Sanborn tennis courts be accepted.
Do we have a motion? So moved. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
I'd just like to ask, how often do we resurface them?
City council, mayor, I'm not exactly sure of the answer to that question. I might have to refer to Bob.
Mayor and city council members, these particular courts were completely reconstructed within my memory, probably about, and I apologize, but I'm guessing here, about eight, 10 years ago. And so some additional work needed to be done. They are cracking, and there's concerns about the surface condition.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think...
I think it's closer to about 15. I'm going to say between 12 and 15.
Well, I know it was in my tenure, and I've been with the city for 13 years, so probably more towards the 12 would be fair. But anyway, we did, we did reconstruct the, the areas at that time, and when you have an asphalt court, it's like an asphalt road. Periodically, it needs maintenance, and what we do, for example, with asphalt roads, is we crack seal them to extend that pavement life and minimize the cost to the, to the taxpayer by getting extra life, and this is that type of treatment. It is an... It is an extension of life rather than totally rebuilding, which would be at a significantly higher cost. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewandowski has another one?
I don't have a question. I just have more of a statement. I stopped out there today just to see, because I thought, and I better go look at that before I vote on it. And I had somebody, I found they were teaching lessons out there, and had them show me around where the bad spots are. And there's big spots of open concrete where whatever that material is overtopped, I'm not sure if it's asphalt or whatever it might be, is worn out. And like you said, there's tons of cracks there, and it does look like it's becoming unsafe. So I think it's something we do need to replace.
Thank you. Any other discussion, city council? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Moller.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Resolutions number one.
Is authorizing 23 payments.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald. Is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski. Discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Resolution number three.
Is approving the agreement with BMJ Engineers and Surveyors Incorporated for professional surveying and inspection services during the 2012, 2013, and 2014 construction seasons.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
I guess this is just a, is this a question for Mr. Clegg? Down Harris says that requests or proposals were sent to four engineering firms. The documents I have here really don't show any other...
Sure. Would you like to know who they were sent to?
Yes.
Oh, sure. It was sent to all our local firms. We had BMJ, Huron Consultants, Tetra Tech, and I apologize, there's a single woman firm that we also sent it to.
Laurie Schink.
Laurie Schink, thank you. Engineers, thank you. I went blank. So anyway, all four were sent proposals and asked to respond. We received three responses. Of those three responses, we found two to meet all our requirements. And of the two, we found that not only did they meet our requirements, but we felt they could equally do the job as well, and we picked the lowest cost of those two.
Okay, I was just wondering why it wasn't included in here, just who the competitors were.
It's part of the process.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Clegg at all? Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. That concludes the items on the regular agenda. We have a couple of announcements. A special city council meeting to discuss the budget will be held this Wednesday, May 16, at 5:00 p.m. in room 408. The city offices will be closed on Monday, May 28, in observance of Memorial Day. And the next regular city council meeting will then be on Tuesday, May 29, at 7:00 p.m. Is there anything else to come before the council?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
Just thank you for getting my email fixed. I'm still 800 behind, so when I get to you, if anybody sent me any emails, I'm working on it.
Anything else from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.